Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Stokes, can you hear us? Counselor Repoli?
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will have our opening prayer by evangelist right, by the Pledge of Allegiance by myself. Please rise.
Good evening, everyone. Let us bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for this day, God, a day that you've granted us once again, God. We thank you for allowing us to come this far today, God. And Lord, now as we go forth in this meeting, Father, we ask that you bless the agenda. Those that are here, Father God, touch each and every issue, Father God, that it may be resolved. Lord, we thank you, we love you, and we give you glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Moving on to the city manager's remarks. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, counsel, I want to say thank you. All of you attended the council retreat last week at the Doubletree and appreciate your engagement, your attention. It was a great retreat thing. I think Preston Bryant from Maguire Woods was the right person. He certainly has, has the background and the skill. And that retreat, just for, because I've been there, cost about eleven thousand dollars. And and six of that was for the facilitator. You know, we have retreats because it's a way for council to build, to collaborate, to build alignment, for us to discuss big ideas for the city, a vision for the city, and move things forward. I think that the depth of the discussions achieved that objective. Mr. Bryant will be producing a report in a few weeks that will present and summarize all of the things that you discussed and the goals and objectives that you identified that we worked on together. So I certainly appreciate the time. It, retreats are part of my management toolbag. I think it's a good way to get alignment with, with the goals of the council and to build relationships and trust. And that's why we do it. And I, I think that all of you participated in a great way and we, we talked about some great things about the city. So thank you. The, yes, sir?
I'd just like to acknowledge that Counselor Stokes from Ward Six didn't attend because of your help.
Yeah, okay. We'll make sure we get her, her, her retreat book so that she can-
She has them.
She has them. Okay, very good, thank you. Secondly, I'd like to thank you for attending the senior leaders' emergency management workshop today. It was very important, I mean, and it was a great show by the council and by the department directors. So it better prepares us in the event of an emergency in the city. We know what to do. And we know where our gaps are and what we need to do in order to close those gaps so that we'll be ready. So six hours is a lot of time.
Yeah.
I'm sure all of us felt it, but it was, it was well, well worth, worth the time. I also want to report that we have selected and contracted recruitment firm for the Hopewell Water Renewal Director. And we had a kickoff with advisory committee the other day. The advisory committee consists of the director of the EQ for the state, one of his deputies, and the directors of the water authorities in Hampton Roads, in Chesterfield, and in Alexandria.
Oh, wow.
And so that's who we're used to kind of sort out, you know, what we really need in this, in the candidate who is eventually selected. We're defining the field. So the company selected, MGT, indicated that if we can have a position brochure by October one, and we're doing everything that we're trying to do that, that we could complete this search in ninety days.
Great.
And so that's what we are striving, striving to do.
Fantastic.
And today, when I stepped out of the workshop, I attended the BGR session, they were hosting the-
Meet the legislators.
Legislative leaders, and I welcomed them to, to the city on your behalf, me and Charles, and, and gave them a signal that we're coming looking for them to, for their assistance because we have some things we want them to carry our water on. And, but it was a good turnout. And so that concludes my remarks for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to say thank you to yourself and Ms. Jordan for coming out to the Arbor Day celebration yesterday at Crystal Lake and Parks and Recreation, Keep Hopewell Beautiful, and the, I think it was called the Green Infrastructure Center. Did a great job putting on a nice event, you know, giving out trees to folks and showing them how to properly plant them. So a lot of good things and great progress is, is being made here in Hopewell. All right, we are going to move on to our communications from citizens. I don't have anyone signed up tonight. So we will move into our public hearings. And our first public hearing is with Ms. English.
Good evening. The school board brings our last supplemental appropriation for fiscal year twenty-five to you for approval tonight. A little background, our budget last year, this is last year's budget, was approved back in May of twenty-four with supplemental appropriations approved last September, January, and May. And in June, Hopewell Public Schools received an additional state fund in an amount of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. These are additional state funds due to the caboose bill that was passed by the state of Virginia. So we asked for approval for that tonight after the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any questions from Ms. English before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing no lights. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for it. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing for the schools? Nope? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the amendment of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Hopewell Public Schools operating budget resolution as presented?
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counsel, excuse me, Vice Mayor Joyner, seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to public hearing number two, Mr. Bassett.
So this is the omnibus nuisance blight, drug blight, derelict buildings, and inoperable vehicles ordinance that, that I presented to council at council's last meeting before continuing on to the public comment section. I just wanted to give council an opportunity if there's any questions about the ordinance.
Okay, are there any questions? This is our second reading on this. Okay, seeing no questions? Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk on the blight nuisance ordinance? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the blight nuisance ordinance as presented tonight?
So move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counsel Harris and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Only thing that I just want to say on this is thank you, Anthony, for working on this. Same thing with you, Chris, I know that you guys worked hand in hand on this. Can we get, where's your, oh, there's Ginger, like a press release, you know, done? Let's get some advertisement about this, you know, coming out to one, show the progress that we're making, but also letting people, you know, be forewarned that, you know, you know, we, we want people to start cleaning their, their properties up. Okay? All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes seven.
Okay, we have a slight agenda change. We moved our four up to our one, so Chief Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening in, in regards to Operation Ceasefire Grant application. And I'm here to ask for permission for the police department to apply for this Operation Ceasefire Grant. This is a three-year grant from calendar year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-eight. And the deadline for us to apply is October the tenth. And a little background on this is the Department of Criminal Justice Service is receiving applications. I received this application the week of September the eighth, just in background. Department of Criminal Justice Service is receiving grant applications to support law enforcement agencies in implementing effective and sustainable solutions that intercept and eliminate local cycles of violence. The maximum award is five hundred thousand dollars and the maximum award for equipment is one hundred thousand dollars. No matching funds are required. And, and it will be on a cost reimbursement basis. The reason why I requested council consider approving this, this, the funding will improve our technology, crime scene support, our crime scene mapping, training, training dealing with violent crime reduction, and strategies to deal with violent crime and also our crime analysis. Also, it will assist us in supplies and overtime. So my goal tonight is to request that city council consider approving of the police department applying for the Operation Ceasefire Grant application. And this grant application is, is in, is a part of our goal, to reduce violent crime, focus on repeat offenders and illegal gun laws in the city of Hopewell. And that's, and also it works with our collaborative efforts to work with our state and federal partners as well. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm open to any questions.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, wow. As a former grant writer, the time limit you working with on writing this grant, how far along are you? And is there any types of waivers granted to you to extend the time to have this grant completed?
Well, upon receiving this grant application, I called a meeting with our staff. I called a meeting with our staff, and we already reviewed the staff and what type of equipment. Are we, are working on a, a list of goals of everything that we want to apply for? And the, the deadline for our next staff meeting to have everything in line to what we want to request is September thirtieth. So the timeline to apply is sufficient. We have time enough to complete the grant application and meet the deadline by October the tenth.
Will the application be available for public review?
I will have to get back with you on whether is, if the application is available for public review or not. I have to go back and do some research on that.
Oh, I don't want to slow you down. But it would be, be nice to review the application just to see all of the components of that grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stokes. Is there a motion to approve the city applying for the Operation Ceasefire Grant?
So move.
A motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counsel Stokes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. R two, Mr. Ward?
Mr. Mayor, don't forget our, our one as well. We moved the-
City council.
Oh, I'm so sorry, you're right. Hold on one second, Chris. R one, Mr. Bassett.
So city council has desired a update to the rules, to its rules going back to at least twenty-twenty-one. As far, as far as I can tell in my research, earlier this year, council adopted a new code of conduct. And now at our retreat last week, we discussed the draft that the city attorney's office is presenting to you for your consideration tonight. The purpose of these proposed rules is first to streamline them. You'll all remember that at the beginning of this year, city council's rules were twenty-seven pages long, and that did not include a remote participation policy. That was a separate, outside of that twenty-seven pages component. What is before you now includes a remote participation policy and is limited to nine pages long. It makes them clearer, and it will make these meetings a little bit more efficient if, if adopted, and also make sure that council meetings are professional and welcoming to, to all members of the community who come to, to partake.
Okay.
Comment or?
Yeah, is it a, a question?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I've had the opportunity to look at the draft today and yesterday. I do have some concerns. I wasn't at the retreat during that time and would ask consideration to table it. I really have some concerns about the part where the money is charged for your misconduct or whatever's going on. But what concerns me is whenever you dip into a person's finances, they should have some type of appeal or some type of process where there's a response and we, I'm gonna charge you two hundred and fifty dollars for X, Y, and Z, and then you have an appeal process. There's no process for appeal. And it just seems at that particular point where you say you go up in increments, that that needs to have an appeal process. Another issue for me with it was personal leave, or I mean, personal time to be, like where I'm at on the medical. I think it was one or two days in a twelve-month period. I think we need to reconsider that. Because people may have family stuff. And I think we maybe need to add maybe one or two days. Maybe we discussed that a little bit more. But that was one of the things that I was really concerned about, particularly the appeal, appeal process when you, you know, are dipping in people's finances. I would like more discussion there and consideration for an appeal process.
So Counselor Stokes, um, these rules don't change, the, the, that's part of the code of conduct that, that city council adopted earlier this year, and that's not been changed at all. The only, the only change to, well, no, actually, there is, there is no change to the, to the code of conduct part. One, one item in the code of conduct, which is the requirement for me as the city attorney to familiarize city council with the rules, that's been pulled out of the code of conduct, and that's just part of the overall rules in general, to make it clear that the city attorney is meant to orient all counselors to all of the rules, not, not just to the, not just to the code of conduct. But the code of conduct is actually not being changed at all from what, what was adopted earlier this year.
That's okay, but I think if, and I thought back then that there should be an appeal process when I first came on, when we discussed it. Again, because you're going up in two fifty increments to some other things, and that's a disciplinary process. And every disciplinary process, Mr. Attorney, should have an appeal process. You should have the right to defend your actions or inactions or whatever you've been accused of that's going to cause you that type of adverse action. And that's, you know, that's, that's what I thought when I read it then and now.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Counselor Day?
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council rules.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner to approve the rules as presented tonight. Is there any discussion?
Um, yes. What happened to my motion to table?
That was discussion.
That was, I mean, you, I didn't hear you actually say make a motion, but I mean, if you want to make-
Stop.
I mean, we, certainly, you know?
I mean.
All right.
The motion, and I, I mean, but I just think that there should be an opportunity for anybody to appeal an adverse action.
Okay, so on the floor, Counsel Stokes had a motion. Is there a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. We're now moving to Counsel Day's motion. Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
No.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, all right. Now your turn, Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight is a, this R item is a piece of business that was held as a public hearing at your last meeting, and you tabled any action on this application at that time. I'm not going to go through the entire presentation again, just hit the highlights. And then if you have any questions for me, I'm available for that. But this particular agenda item relates to a conditional use permit request that has been submitted with the city to construct a single-family dwelling on non-conforming lots known as Parcels O one-three, one-five-nine-five and O one-three, one-six-zero-zero located on South Nineteenth Avenue. Applicant is Vets Housing LLC, and this property is in Ward Five. The non-conformities real quick with this parcel are the width and the total square footage. They're both smaller than the minimums required. And then the applicant's gonna, is proposing to construct a one-story, three-bedroom, two-bath, thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-two-square-foot home on this property. And these are some images of what's being proposed. Our staff is recommending approval with the, with our standard conditions that typically apply to most of these CUP applications. Planning commission agreed with those conditions as well. We have received no comments. And the applicant, Mr. Mayo, is here this evening. I believe you wanted to speak, or were you just available for questions? Mr. Mayor would just like to speak real quickly to you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of council. Thank you all for this opportunity. I would like to acknowledge Mr.-
Can you speak into the mic?
Yes, sir. I would like to acknowledge Mr. Christopher Ward. My experience working with Mr. Ward and his team has been outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Ward, for all of your help and guidance on this project. Our intention is to build and list a quality single-family home for sale to the public. And this would add a needed attainable home to Hopewell and also contribute to the revenues of the city through the permits, the property taxes, and the economic activity of homeownership. Um, this plan is fully compatible with the neighborhood. We meet all the setback requirements, ensuring that this home and its neighbors enjoy the same privacy and space as all the other homes. The architecture and style was designed to mirror the existing neighborhood and fully fulfills all the conditions in the conditional use permit. I would like to thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, for your candid feedback there in the last meeting. We took it very serious, and it pushed us to be a better communicator of the vision and mission of this new organization. This project is a meaningful first step for us, and to have this opportunity to present our first home to this council is both a privilege and a major milestone for us. And I sincerely thank each of you for being a part of this experience. We look forward to serving and investing in this community, and we humbly and respectfully request approval of this conditional use permit. Thank you all for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this conditional use permit request to construct, construct a single-family dwelling on non-conforming lots, parcel zero-one-three-five-nine-five and zero-one-three-dash-sixteen-hundred. This is located on Nineteenth, correct, or is it Sixteenth? There's an, it's Nineteenth. It's Nineteenth, that this, yeah, that's okay, it's on, on South Nineteenth.
Um, approving it with conditions.
Uh, I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes, ma'am.
You stated reapproving it?
No, I'm, I'm-
No, the motion's to approve the conditional use permit as presented tonight.
Oh, I thought she said reapproving.
No, no.
Oh, no.
Uh, no.
All right, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No worries.
No worries.
Um, all right, that was the question I had, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Seeing no other lights for questions or comments, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, next, oh, Mr. Ward again.
Okay, uh, per the city's subdivision ordinance and specifically section 7-dash-4-dash-1H of the subdivision ordinance, uh, states that city council, uh, needs to approve street names for new, for proposed new subdivisions. And so you may remember, uh, Hopecrest Towns, we went through a whole rezoning on this particular project. Uh, I believe it was, um, it's been some time on that, uh, when we did the rezoning. And, uh, I think I've got a timeline in here for you. Yeah, actually rezoning approval was in February of this year. The subdivision plat has been submitted, uh, administratively and it's gone through some staff and departmental review. The construction plans are also, for this project are also complete. So as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, we're almost there, we're almost finished with the approvals. But one of the last steps here is that you all review and approve the proposed street names that have been submitted with the subdivision. Uh, here's the, uh, subdivision plat on the left and then the street names on the right. These are the names that are being proposed by the developer. These were not selected by staff or, uh, anything like that. Um, the, this group of street names was submitted to the, um, Crater Planning District Commission for their road name clearinghouse. It was submitted through that so that there's no duplication. And, um, all of these names made it through that, uh, clearinghouse review. Planning commission, uh, has recommended approval, uh, including these names on the preliminary plat, which happened in March. And, um, the plat is meeting all requirements according to the subdivision ordinance and is therefore also recommending approval. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, sir.
Is it any particular reason why these names are like they are? Are they named after somebody? Nix, Candace, Maggis, Mons. Is, is, is any significance to it that you know of?
I know of the Mons. Mr. David Mons is, uh, a local Hopewell person who has been leading the charge on this project from a real estate stand, real estate investment standpoint. And actually, um, through that work is now employed by the developer. So I know where that name comes from. His name is David Mons and he's presented to you all before.
Yes, I remember Mons, okay.
The other names, I would suspect that several of them are associated with a particular person. I just don't know who they are.
That's, that's, that's me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I had to do a second look at Candy's Lane. I thought it said Candy Cane Lane.
It could.
We'll have a little Candy Lane, uh, neighborhood. All right, is there a motion to approve the Hopecrest Towns street names as presented tonight?
Show move, second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Harris and seconded by, we got her, right here, Counselor Repoli, okay. Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
No.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to R five. I guess this would be Mr. Rogers, Mr. Bissett? The, uh, the resolution for the Hope Center? Or I can make it real easy. Is there a motion to amend the FY 2026 budget and designate funds from the warming shelter to the Hope Center as presented tonight?
Show move.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Bissett?
So, removing money from the warming center to the Hope Center that was presented by, uh, a guy from City Refuge?
Correct, yeah.
What happens to the warming shelter? That closes, right?
No.
So, yeah, the, the, uh, the refuge will, 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 will take that, uh, responsibility and provide that service.
I, so does that mean that the warming shelter closes?
No, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a revised operation.
There will still be a warming shelter.
Yeah, there's still going to be a warming shelter. But it's not gonna be done through, I think it's charities. It's gonna be done through Hopewell Center.
It's gonna be done year-round too.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, well, we have finished early, so if you guys want to, you could have closing comments. Or we can leave early. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.
Great.